All right, this is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for March 9th of 2015. We begin by rising to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Forsyth.
Okay, let the record show that all trustees are present. We have an official forum to conduct business. First order of business being a review of the February 23rd, 2015 Regular Village Board Meeting minutes. And trustees, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 23 as presented, or if you see reason to correct them, let us know that correction.
Motion.
Sorry. Motion by trustee Hack, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to approve the February 23rd, 2015 Regular Village Board Meeting minutes as presented. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes. Okay. Motion carries, minutes are approved. Next order of business is the accounts payable and payroll. And trustees, you have in your packet the payroll for the pay period ending February 28th of 2015 in the amount of $43,153.59. From the general fund, you have bills totaling $28,327.36. From the water and sewer fund, you have bills totaling $7,726.32. And from the capital improvement fund, you have bills totaling $39,219.24. Now, under the capital improvement fund expenditures, I call your attention to a check in the amount of $35,194.50 payable to Outson Electric, which is on the agenda as item F. So, when I ask for a motion to approve the payment of the bills, that dollar amount, I'm asking that a motion be made to approve the bills pending the approval of the Outson Electric check later in the agenda. So, can I have a motion?
That's a vote.
I got that. Okay, motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Riker, to approve the bills as presented, holding the Outson Electric bill for $35,194.50 for confirmation later in the agenda. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries and the bills paid as noted. We come to public comment and/or questions for any non-agenda items. So if you're on the agenda later, you can discuss that, we can discuss that item when we get to it. Is there anybody here with any questions or comment not on the agenda?
I have one.
Would you come to the microphone and identify yourself?
Yeah. I'm Adam Jones, and I have a real estate brokerage in town here. I just rented a house on West Street, 426 Southwest Street, which is between Garfield and Blue Devil Drive exit, and there's not a, no parking site in that section. And I'm afraid that the tenants may start trying to park on West Street there and end up tearing up the law because there's no curbs there either. And the remainder of West Street, all the way, I believe from Wilmington Road to the fire station, is no parking along the whole, whole thing.
Okay.
Was there signs up there prior to us paving that?
Yeah.
I remember a sign there before.
There are signs between Blue Devil Drive and Wilmington Road.
Yeah.
And there are signs all the way from the fire station to Garfield.
Okay.
And this is on the west side of the street.
And there's no signs on the west side of the street from Garfield to Blue Devil Drive?
Correct.
Okay. We'll check into that.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, hearing done. We're going to move on. Reports of committees and officials. The police chief is not here this evening, so we'll go on to the engineer's report. Anything, any updates?
Nothing new to update.
Okay. Old business, we have no old business under new business. We have an ordinance regarding a petition for special use permit to allow a single-family residence above a commercial use at 201 North Second Street. Mr. Hernandez is the petitioner. And trustees, you have in your packet, George, you want to go through that?
Mr. Adio Hernandez owns the property located at 201 North Second. He plans to open an Italian restaurant on the ground floor of the building. He also plans to have a single-family residence on the second floor of the building. While the restaurant has a permitted use and requires no additional zoning approvals and a B1 zoning classification, the residence over a business use requires a special use permit. Mr. Hernandez has petitioned for a special use permit. Public hearing for him on the petition, planning and zoning commission requested and received additional information from Mr. Hernandez's architect. After deliberation and findings of fact, a 4-0 vote of the planning and zoning commission forwarded a favorable recommendation to the village board with the following conditions: One, restaurant and apartment to be completed simultaneously. Both certificates of occupancy are to be issued at the same time. Two, planning and planning and finance exhibit as it is to be amended to include coverage of the block wall of south elevation, use hardy board siding or equivalent. Pardon me, continuing on him on the south profile, use loose neck lighting on signs. Continue citing a brick base along full south elevation of buildings. That's the context of that remark. Petition is approved for a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling only. Petition must comply with all applicable village codes, health codes, and fire codes. Special use will run up the land. Mr. Hernandez's architect has supplied an exhibit reflecting the recommended conditions. The village board may accept the findings of the planning and zoning commission and approve petition with conditions, and the alternative, the board may develop its own findings and determine contrary to the planning and zoning recommendation.
Trustees, I want to call to your attention the exhibit in the packet that you've got, the updated one with the conditions as outlined there, giving you a visual of what it would look like. Also note that there were, if you look at the record of the public hearing, it was continued over three different time periods, from December through February, as the petitioner responded to some of the requests of the Planning and Zoning Commission and updated and presented, as I indicated, the most recent of the illustrations of what it would look like. Trustees, do we have any questions? Mr. Hernandez present? Yes, he is. Did you, was this something you wanted to do, or is this something that you're being made to do?
Some undecided.
Just for clarification, the submitted, the submitted exhibit only shows two, two profiles. I'm assuming the theme is continued all the way around the building, just so we get that in the minutes?
Correct.
Okay.
And who is the architect?
Who is the architect? Mr. Ben Martin.
Trustees, any questions? Is there a motion to accept the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission with the conditions as stated above?
Motion.
Sorry. Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to accept the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission with the conditions as specified by that commission. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Okay. Motion carries and I, for the record, that's ordinance 14-23. Next item is a resolution urging the governor and the general assembly to protect the full funding of the local government distributive fund. Trustees, you have in your packet, as soon as I get to it. We have been asked by the Illinois Municipal League and several other organizations that represent municipal governments across the county and the state to go on record with the importance of a local government distributive fund. And you can see that this is the state income tax revenues delivered to the, each of the municipalities. And the current, the governor has asked for a reduction of 50% of the expected distribution. To the Village of Peatone, that's approximately $201,000. And to translate this into understandable, it's about one-fifth of the salaries that we would pay to our police department. It's half of what pays, we would pay to our public works department. It would be the equivalent of an entire year's worth of sidewalk and street repairs and grinding and paving. Now, what it actually turns out to be, I think, is, is up to the board to come out and decide what's in the best interest of the community, once this is decided. However, the, the amount is significant. And the resolution, which would be resolution 14-R23, is urging the governor and the general assembly to protect the full funding of the local distributive fund revenues. And it goes through a whole series of whereas, but the long and short of it is, it comes down to it's 50%. And statewide, it would be reducing by $600 million across the state to all municipalities. And the fact that it would also impact jobs, possibly create tax increases, programs, and service cuts. And we, for the record, specify the approximate loss to Peatone. Therefore, now let it be resolved that the Village of Peatone urges the governor and general assembly to protect full funding of the local distributive fund and other revenue sources that allow local governments to provide for the health, safety, and general welfare of their residents. So, discussion on this?
What's the drive behind this?
The drive behind the resolution?
No, from Governor Rauer.
The drive behind the governor is looking at this as one of the ways to straighten out the funding problems of the state. And in essence, what it does is, it passes on to the local governments, the burden for state, the state government, who has acted irresponsibly over the past number of years. And it's kind of like, we're the ones expected to pay for their poor decisions. So that's the impetus behind it. Other questions? Hearing done, I would ask for a motion to pass, this would be resolution 14-R23, urging the governor and the general assembly to protect full funding of local.
Can I add one more question?
Sure.
When is the vote on this?
This takes, when does the general assembly decide this?
Yes.
They will decide this by the end of May, typically.
Could this be brought up at the lobby day?
Oh, it, it is on the agenda for all the organizations that lobby. As a matter of fact, all of the organizations, the Illinois Municipal League, the Will County Governmental League, the South Suburban Mayors and Managers are all working actively on behalf to lobby and inform state representatives and senators and anybody that'll listen, the impact it's going to have on each of our communities.
It's April 21st, correct?
The lobby days? Yeah.
Okay.
It's in your packet.
Is this something that has to be voted on today, or can it be voted on next meeting? As far as getting to them in time?
We have been asked to go on record at an early time.
I'd like to read more about this. You know, the state is in massive financial troubles, and cuts need to be done everywhere. And, I mean, I don't think the local municipality should take the full burden, but I think we're all going to have to take somewhat of a cut. I'd just like to look into it a little more, to see what else goes with it. That's just my opinion.
It's, this is a resolution of the board if the board sees. If there is no resolution to that effect?
What is, what is the deadline to get this in? Is there a deadline, a set deadline?
I, we have not been given a specific deadline.
So next meeting should be fine? In your opinion?
Yeah.
Would that be enough time? I think so.
So, in effect, we'll table this till the next meeting?
That would be my motion, yes.
Let's put it in the form of a motion, then. Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by? Second. Trustee Hupkey to table this resolution urging the governor and the general assembly to protect full funding until the next board meeting, which is the 20-something of March. Okay, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries and this is tabled for till the next meeting. Next item on the agenda is abolishing the resignation for the Economic Development Advisory Committee of trustee Forsyth, who's been the representative of this group. And we're doing this for no other purpose than to make it part of the official record so we can appoint a replacement. I don't know if you want to say anything, or we can just leave it at this?
Leave it at this.
So, is there a motion to, to accept the resignation of trustee Forsyth from the Economic Development Advisory Committee? So, okay, motion by trustee Riker, seconded by?
Mr. Wicker.
Trustee Wicker. I thought I heard something on that side.
I did too.
Okay. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Present.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Present.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries and the resignation is accepted. Now, to fill that appointment, I've asked trustee Hupkey to fill the vacancy. I would entertain a motion to confirm trustee Hupkey to complete the unexpired term with trustee Forsyth on the Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Real quick, can I just ask a general question?
Sure.
When it comes to the appointments to this committee and any other committee?
Yeah.
The appointments are, are made by you and approved by the board?
Correct.
In terms of removing someone from a committee, forcibly if needed, what's, what's the process there? Is that, can that be done when there's an appointment?
Yes. The president, the president who appoints also has the authority to remove for stated reasons, and then the board would confirm the removal. So, yes, it is essentially the opposite of what happens with the appointment.
Okay, so the term doesn't have to run, or it's not required?
It is not required. A person can be removed before the term is run, but there must be reasons.
Of course, okay.
Okay. Having said that, I need a motion. Do I not? It's a motion. Or did, we got the motion. Second.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Motion by trustee Hack, seconded by trustee Callahan, to approve the, or to confirm the appointment of trustee Hupkey to the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Present.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries and congratulations, Mr. Hupkey. All right, next item on the agenda is, we currently have two vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And trustees, you will recall that I've indicated that I was putting a request in the, the Peatone VDP for interested individuals to apply to fill the vacancies. There are two vacancies, one that expires on May of 2016, and one that expires May of this year. And those are the two positions that are, we would be approving at this time. To fill the position expiring May 2016, which was D. Wayne Parker's resignation, I am asking that Adam Jones, and trustees, you have in your packet, a copy of the letter submitted by Mr. Jones applying for this position. Mr. Jones is present, and I would ask that a motion be made to confirm his appointment to the position expiring May 20th of, May of 2016.
And these are the only applicants that you have center in our packet?
That is it.
Motion.
Second. Okay. Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Riker, to approve Adam Jones to fill the vacancy expiring, the term expiring May of 2016 on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
And also, we have an appointment for the term expiring May of 2015, two months from now. And as I indicated, board, what my intent is, when we do the reappointments in May, that this person would be reappointed at that point, along with the, anyone else that needs to be appointed at that time for an expired term. We have Mr. William Mercer, or Bill Mercer, as he's more commonly known. And trustees, you also have his application letter and his resignation in there. And is there a motion to?
Motion.
Confirm?
Second.
Okay. Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hupkey, to confirm William Bill Mercer for the term expiring May of 2015. Clerk, please call a roll.
I was the second. Who was the second?
No, I was second.
You were second, yeah.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan?
Yes. Okay. Motion carries and we've been lucky enough to have the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Gary Hudson, there, who's had an opportunity, I think, to talk to these folks, case of that's, that's good. Moving on, the next item on the agenda, the pay request that we had alluded to earlier. George, you want to go through that one?
Yes. Outson Electric is the contractor for the installation of the Wilmington Road Fire Station generator. The full bid amount is $50,950. Outson Electric has submitted pay request number one in the amount of $39,105, less retainage. The amount due for this pay request is $35,194.50.
And trustees, we have been observing, and the, this, the next step on this is getting it hooked up with Northern Illinois Gas, and then it should be fully functional. So, is there a motion to authorize payment to Outson Electric invoice number 27833 in the amount of $35,194.50 as pay request number one?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hack. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
And Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Motion carries and pay request is now officially approved. Next item on the agenda has to do with a discussion, continued discussion of the temporary moratorium on development fees. George, you want to go through that?
The last board meeting, a staff was asked to research information on a program by the Village of Manhattan that issued a check to buyers at the time of closing. Upon inquiry, Manhattan did have such a program in place. The program rebated a specific amount of the development fees. The program has both calendar time limits, had both calendar time limits and maximum number permits, with an option for the village to extend the program upon review. Basically, a check was issued to the buyer or title company at the time of closing or shortly thereafter. A minimum seven-day advance notice was required. The program was structured so that checks could be written without waiting for placement of a board claim, placement of the check on a board claim docket. As discussed at the last meeting, if the program is to be instituted, a minimum, a minimum of the following decisions are required: adoption of an ordinance reflecting the moratorium statement as to when the moratorium ends, methodology, do you waive fees upfront, time of permit, defer the fees, or do you reimburse the buyer? I have some footnotes. If we decide to reimburse the buyer, we cannot reimburse the buyer for development fees for their governmental entities. They can't run that money through our voice. That's their money, so they would have to issue a check individually to reach those We, I think there was some discussion as to making sure that there was some tax obligation on rebating those. And as far as the village funds goes, those, those rebates, we did the rebate, that money, by ordinance, goes into the capital improvement fund. It would then have to be transferred out of that into the general, and then the check can out of the general fund. So it is doable, it's got a couple things in place. There is the option of just, if you wish to proceed with something, you can also have the other options we've already discussed, which is waive the fees entirely, or defer payment until time of closing.
When we receive the money, are we receiving the portions for the different entities?
No, they, no. They, they pay those entities directly, and we get a receipt that they've paid them for that specific lot and address.
Which gives us, enables us to have a record that the money has been paid, so that building permits can be issued and so on. Okay.
Are we going to have a maximum amount of awards or a maximum amount of time?
That is part of what the board has been discussing and what's the consensus of the board.
How many houses have we had built in the last five years?
The last five years, we've, we've been averaging one or two a year. We had one year where we had none. I couldn't tell you exactly the last five years. I think last year we had two, the year before that, one or two, and, and one of those five years, I'm sure we didn't have any.
And again, review what we said last time. This is looking at subdivisions that have already been plotted out and approved, and that's, that's your ultimate limit unless you establish something different.
And we have the ability to waive fees or defer fees for our portion only?
And we have the ability to waive or defer for all of them.
I know. We do, can we do it just for us? Just for our portion?
We can, we can do it just for us, yes.
Just as we're prohibited from taking money on our books, and then, I'm going to phrase that, from using the money from other entities and refunding it from our own books, are we prohibited from taking the money on our books? And what I'm getting at is, if the other entities, essentially, if we had an intergovernmental agreement with them, would they waive the amounts in question, and we collected it on their behalf?
We're still accepting their money.
It is theirs, even though they've waived?
Yeah, it's, it turns out to be an accounting issue and an auditing issue.
Okay. I was just wondering if ultimately, if it fell through where the development? I was just wondering if ultimately, if it fell through where the developer or the buyer did not get the rebate, we would have the money so that we could disperse it to the appropriate entities? As opposed to us simply holding it and giving it back so that we could collect the whole thing and refund the whole thing? But if it fell through, we could then distribute the money to the entities that would otherwise get it.
Sorry, could you do it again? I will reverse myself in asking you to repeat it.
So if the other entities agreed to waive their portion entirely, but we simply collected a larger amount? And if the developer and/or the buyer goes through with their requirements, we refund the whole sum. If they fail to meet all the requirements, we then could distribute the excess that we ordinarily, excess to what we ordinarily would obtain to the various entities so that they still get their cut? If the buyer doesn't follow through with the requirements that they're supposed to?
So that's assuming the buyer has paid it upfront?
Yeah.
I mean, the seller, the builder has paid it upfront?
Correct.
And we were rebating at the time of occupancy?
Right. So in other words, we're not giving away anyone else's money because it never was theirs to begin with. But, okay.
And the question becomes, do we have the authority to accept money on behalf of them and hold it?
Right. It'd have to be-
Later to be distributed.
I, yeah, I don't know how that would go through an auditorium.
Yeah.
And it's just, it would mean setting up additional funds and then probably additional bank accounts to keep that money separate and, yeah.
Then perhaps through an intergovernmental agreement, maybe all the entities will get on board with us. And that's one possibility as well.
I think so. And the process of doing that also adds time for them because each of the boards would be required to go through the process of approving that. And that further moves it down the way for the current building season.
Well, we said we wouldn't be ready for this building season anyways. We talked about that last time. There was no way we'd be up and running for now. It's a stimulus package, you know. It's got to be put together correctly.
The whole idea behind this is to crank the pump to get construction started.
It's a stimulus package. That's exactly what it is.
And to that extent, the simplest way to do it is basically for us to go ahead and have a motion that basically waives the fee to the developer, but then that puts him, and that gets back to the board's concern, is does the buyer get the benefit of that? So, all right. What are the key points of the board's desire to proceed on this? I think everybody is in agreement that we want to proceed with something that will go back to the purchaser, correct? Okay. The biggest concern has to be the exact procedure that doesn't violate any of the approved governmental accounting, I can't, what is it?
Gatsby?
Gatsby. Any of the Gatsby issues, plus does not supersede our authority to collect money. Okay? Here's what we're gonna do. We're also looking at the idea of potential intergovernmental agreement, which I think the whole fee structure was part of that at one point, was it not?
There is an ordinance establishing at least one I T A, but it was later ratified into the actual codification of ordinances in the subdivision code.
Here's what we're gonna do. By the next meeting, we're going to take those four ideas. You do like the idea similar to Manhattan, the procedures that Manhattan used that might work in our system, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna come back next meeting with a proposal of how this will be implemented and what it will say, with the goal of getting it active for as soon as we can for the current building season. But we also agreed last time that we were not going to set a specific time limit on this because, as was pointed out earlier, we might be in a situation where people get on the building thing later in the season and they don't actually get started till fall or to next building season, but they know it's coming. Okay? And it's clear. All right. I believe we've got a consensus on it.
Either that or at least an option to extend it if you need to be.
See, I like that idea.
At least with an option.
I don't like leaving-
If you want us to put a timeframe on it, a year or two years, but with an option to extend it.
Okay.
Or reverse it to it. The whole idea is to stimulate people to come and buy a home here. And like John said, the builder said, it's economics, the dollar value is what's gonna, we offer something that's good and cheaper than our neighbors, hopefully it stimulates them to move here than someplace else.
What we're looking for is people, not necessarily cheaper, but people getting more bang for their buck.
Do we have to put a timeline on it to figure out the maximum number?
I think probably ultimately the best, the maximum number is the number of permits that for the subdivisions that have already been approved, which I believe from the last time we said like a hundred and fifty or something like that max.
Hundred and seventy, twenty.
Hundred and something. Okay. Yeah, I don't have that in mind. Okay, so that is the ultimate limit on it. If somebody were to come in in the next two or three years and boom, it's gone, then that ends it. If on the other hand, we only get fifty over the next year or two and we want to extend it or refresh it-
Give us the leverage to go in or out, either way.
Okay.
That's all we need. We need that depending what happens in the market. Give us the flexibility that we got control of it. That's gonna benefit us.
My concern would be an extended time period. I'd be against a time period that's too long. And the reason being, it's supposed to stimulate, it's supposed to bring a stimulus, and I don't want people sitting back and biding their time for three years trying to see what happens in the meantime. Let's get people to move as opposed to sit and wait.
Which gets to the point of if you establish something as two or three building seasons with the option to extend at that point in time, I think it gets to where you're going.
And if we're building only one or two houses a year, if we do it like in a thirty, thirty permit and then extend it after that, I mean, that's, that's a lot of homes. For us, it's a lot of homes. If we're gonna shoot for this building season as far as passing this, I'd like to put a limit of this building season on it and then next year we can renew fifty-two. Or, I mean, again, it's just to try to motivate people now and maybe a second building season, but I would do-
Part of it too has to get into this, how long it takes to get through all the paperwork to get a building permit and things of that nature. And if, I would be more open to the idea of if you're gonna tag it to say the next two building seasons at least. Because that gives people time, if I don't get all my paperwork in, in time, and I have to wait another god-awful year in order to do this, at least, you know, I don't have that problem.
And I would be, just to be clear too, I'd be okay with giving them additional time to close. I mean, those-
Is this the application?
I'm just talking about the application process, not, it doesn't need to be a closing date scheduled by the government, but simply that the paperwork has been put into motion.
Okay.
Well, most of these dues are triggered by either the number of permits or the date that the permit is issued. So if it's two-year, you could come in in month twenty-three, and if you had available building permit and received clearance for that building, you would still be in the process, you may not have even dug your foundation yet. Even Manhattan had, you know, between May seventh, they had a full year and a month or a year and two months, May seventh of oh-eight to July thirty-first of oh-nine for the permit. And I think they extended it two times after that.
Which gets back to what you were saying before, the ability to do it now, we will review it and extend it.
So, we'll come back with some kind of language next time.
All right. Board members, I've put in your packet, the Chamber of Commerce is holding an after-hours program this Thursday. They just notified me outside here that they would like to invite everybody. That would be you and your spouses. Put a flyer in there, in your packet relative to that. If you could let me know tomorrow if you would do this, they've asked if I could give them a call and give them a heads up so they have the right number. An approximate number of people to expect, so they don't get flooded or on the other hand, order too much. Okay. Any announcements, any due dates or anything? All right. Then, here now, I would create a motion to adjourn the March ninth, twenty-fifteen meeting. Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to adjourn the March ninth, twenty-fifteen Village Eastside Board meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Reicher?
Yes.
Motion carries.